Welcome to the May 18th, 2010 meeting of the Sammamish City Council. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
I'm here.
Present.
I'm here.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Here.
I think tonight we'll have, if there's a redhead in the audience, we'll have them lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hey, well, look at that.
(laughing).
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. You have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Student liaison, boy, they study hard, don't they?
They do. It's finals time.
Okay, no presentations and proclamations tonight, and the sign up sheet, we have Brooke Bachesta, Bachesta, I'm sorry. And then you.
Hi, I'm Brooke Bachesta, and I'm the ASB president at Eastside Catholic School down the street. I'm here today because I've been in contact with Laura Philpott. We have been working alongside with Skyline High School and Eastlake High School to try and get the names of our streets changed that our schools lay on, so we were hoping to change it to Crusader Way, Spartan Way, and Red Wolf Way. So, I don't know, we thought it'd be kind of cool if we all kind of matched and brought a school spirit to it. Because I know if you go down to Bellevue, there's, I think it's Wolverine Way, so we copied the idea from them. But, we're, I'm here today, I'm just wondering what other further steps should we take to finish up this project?
Well, I think it's a good idea, and I'm going to refer to our city manager to work with staff and work with your schools.
Yes, we're trying to get that information. Laura, you got some information on that one, so you want to just tell us quickly?
Actually, we were bringing a resolution forward at the next council meeting for the council's consideration to officially change the names. We've worked with the post office, both in Issaquah and Redmond, and then been referred to the post office in Seattle, and they're okay with it.
Oh, good.
Now, how's that for a fast response, huh?
No, it's just, it's just the lane going in, right? Just the road going in.
So, my understanding, what we'd be doing is we, it's just like the driveways that go into our school, so.
Done. You made the request, and it's done in three seconds.
As far as ordering signs and installing them, obviously, the schools would pay for the sign and the installation of it, we just, we just know who to contact.
The response was so quick, so we expect you to pay for all the signs.
Are there any requirements on the signage that they need to know?
We'll work with you guys, that we have a way of getting the signs, so we'll, we'll take care of that.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
Now, do you have a suggestion for 228th Avenue, too?
No, not at the moment. I'll get back to you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
High School Way. Yeah.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Go ahead.
Church Lane.
Good evening, good evening, council. This has been a long time. I used to be the Assistant Director for the Bellevue Parks Department, and so it's been a very long time since I've been in front of a council, and I want to thank you all very much for having us here. Again, my name is Ann Lindsay, and I live on Pine Lake, and I am working on a book called Redheads and More Redheads. But, the good news is that about eight weeks ago, I applied to get a Guinness World Record for the most natural redheads in one spot. And just last Thursday, Guinness got back with me and said yes. And so, on July 17th, Saturday, July 17th, across the street at Skyline High School, we're going to be having the Guinness World Record for the most redheads in one spot, and natural redheads in one spot. You can't have dyed hair. And so, we wanted, one of the requirements of Guinness is to request if a local official could be our official for Redheads and More Redheads Day.
Mayor was redhead before he turned gray, so.
Yeah.[316.12][316.12](laughing). And so, what we'd like to do is, I would like to invite Mayor Don Jaren, and if he has another council member that happens to have a wife that's a redhead. Actually, I've met with John's wife as well, and so, if you're in town on Saturday, July 17th, we'd like to invite you to be our official city representatives for Redheads Day and More Redheads Day.
Well, I enthusiastically accept. How about you, Mr. James?
My wife must have already checked our social calendar, so I'm assuming I'm going to be there anyway.
Well, thank you very much, and if there's any chance, and I'm not sure if you'd be interested in doing this, but if there's any chance that we could set up Saturday, July 17th, or that weekend, as, as the City of Sammamish Redhead Day, I'll let you think about that, and we'd be honored to be able to say that we have a redhead day in, in Sammamish.
Then do we have to do blondes and brunettes?
You might have to.
Absolutely.
Depends if they can get together.
Gray eyes and brown eyes, purple eyes. Bald, nose, white hair, sea.
Okay, okay, I'm losing control here. Are there any other council members that want to join us on July 17th?
I'll go.
Okay, well, we've got three officials that are going.
Thank you so much, and we really appreciate all of you for doing this.
And I did, I did Bing redheads, and I found that, I guess in, in Ireland, about 13% are redheads?
Yes, in fact, in the world, there's about 2% of the population is redhead, so if there's 6.8 billion people in the world, there's 138 million redheads. And so, it's about 2%, and so, if we figured 2% of Sammamish, or the area here, we should, we need to have at least 225 redheads to start the Guinness.
Right, and actually, there's probably about 820 Sammamish citizens that are redheads, statistically speaking, in which case, it seems a proclamation for those 820 people makes a lot of sense, so maybe we can do that. This is forewarning that we might get that on the agenda coming up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
They have all the other hair colors show up.
I was asking, are we going to have the bald hair days?
No. For those who have it in a bottle, we can do a day for each bottle.
Okay. Is there any other public comment this evening? Nope, seeing none, then we'll close public comment. And next is a consent agenda, which includes payroll for the period ending April 30th, in the amount of $256,558. Approval of the claims for a period ending May 13th, in the amount of $1,294,000. A contract for parks and community survey, and actually, we've pared that down to just a park survey, haven't we?
That's correct.
With Hebert. Then the contract for the Evans Creek Preserve Phase 1 Design with LPD, and a resolution appointing members to the Sammamish Youth Board. And I noticed that there were, how many members?
35.
35 members, applicants for the new youth board, and we're appointing them. I was surprised, I didn't see any from Pine Lake Middle School. A lot from Eastlake High School.
Can, can you explain that, Jesse?
Jesse, do you know why the distribution is?
No, it would be Lynn.
Or Lynn, yes.
Lynn program.
Without pulling it from the consent agenda.
Well, I'm Lynn Hanlos, Recreation Coordinator. They, they do, all the schools are made aware, however, if a Pine Lake Middle School student applied this year, and it was their last year, they're most likely going to become either a, probably a Skyline student. So, and majority of the youth board does consist of high school students, whereas this year, we're finding we're getting younger people, which is helpful. So, we're getting closer and closer to almost a 50-50 representation of both high school age and elementary school, or middle school age.
Uh huh. Okay, good.
We do have International Community School, if you're not aware, that's in Kirkland.
At the Lake Washington?
It's ICS, and that, I think, is still in the Lake Washington School District, and what they probably, what the deal is, is that they go, they live in Sammamish, but actually go to school at ICS.
Sure.
Can, can we see if we can't get somebody from the middle school interested in it? I mean, it's just not to have any.
We do have Inglewood Junior High.
I know, but Pine Lake Middle.
Right, right.
I notice there are half as many Skyline students as.
Yes, which has always.
From Eastlake.
Which has historically been the case, too. We're only, but we are increasing in numbers, though.
Could you maybe, if the council concurs, just try and get at least one student from Pine Lake, too?
Good.
Can we adopt a resolution, at least appoint this?
Yes, I would.
And other person?
It's on the consent agenda.
Okay, all those in favor of approval of the consent, oh, I need a motion to approve the consent.
To approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
By your vote of 7-0, it's approved. There are no public hearings, there's no unfinished business, so we have new business at ordinance, the first reading modifying the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program.
Our Deputy Public Works Director, Laura Philpott, has a report on this thing, and it's an extensive report. It's about two and a half hours' report.
Four.
Four, okay, okay. So, 9:30 is that our German time, so.
You'll let me know when it's about 9:20.
Okay, I will, I will let you know that.
Let's see, it's 9:20.
Melanie, do you mind pulling out the presentation? Thank you. So, do you have the clicker? The Neighborhood Traffic Management Program is what I'm here to discuss tonight. A little history, what, what is the city's Neighborhood Traffic Management Program? Well, it's a program that the city has developed to provide the framework for us to manage impacts from vehicular traffic typically related to speeds and volumes within residential neighborhoods. Specifically, it gives us the methodology and the tools necessary to address safety concerns and improve livability as it relates to traffic. 10 years ago, the city officially adopted the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program under Ordinance 20061, and we've been administering it for approximately 10 years. So, why was the program developed? Well, it was originally developed, I wasn't here, but from what I understand, it was developed in anticipation of the multiple requests that would come as a brand-new city, just coming from King County. The staff resources were low, and it was a way to provide consistency with the number of requests coming in, as well as a framework to engage the neighborhoods and receive approval from the neighborhoods before devices were installed, if they were requested. It also provided some methodology in order to prioritize those projects and requests based on resources and, and need. I just wanted to share with you, there are five streets within the city of Sammamish who've gone completely through the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program and have physical devices installed. They're listed here, I can go into more detail later if there's questions about specific ones, but the improvements range from raised crosswalks, to traffic circles, to curb extensions, and they've been successful. The current program, I'm going to quickly step through the 12 steps that are in our current program. It starts with a project request, and staff reviews that, they assign, based on the data collected associated with that request, they prioritize it, give it a actual score, a ranking number, then go back to the neighborhood and have a petition to study. What's required in the petition to study is 51% of the residents living in that defined area, typically, it's the residents who are adjacent to the road in question. Need to approve the petition to study in order for the staff to move forward. From there, assuming that it's approved, there's a plan development, and then, from the plan development, the test installation is required, and test installation is, requires 61% of the residents in that same affected area to approve before the test devices are installed. The test devices are in for three to four months, then the project is evaluated, staff would collect data to, to test the, the results of the, the tested devices, and then, a, the project evaluation is shared with the neighborhood, another ballot is, is developed, and the neighborhood then needs to vote one more time for, to decide if they want permanent installation of the devices.
What are those devices?
Those would be chicanes, curb extensions, where you're narrowing the road physically, speedhumps, raised crosswalks, traffic circles, any of the physical, where you're actually physically installing something in the roadway that would slow a car. It's either a vertical or horizontal deflection of the roadway. The ballot, at this point, requires 60% approval, and this is actually of returned ballots, not of the residential, the residents along the affected area. Then there is a step where there's reporting, essentially, it's, it's communicating back the results of the ballot, and the, the plan, and the recommendations from staff, goes into design and construction, assuming the ballot was successful. And then there's a step designated to discuss how to handle proposed landscaping. In the current plan, it calls for the city to pay for the initial installation costs, and then the neighborhood would take on the, the long-term maintenance of the landscaping. It has a step for monitoring and maintenance as a requirement of the city, as well as follow-up evaluation three to five years after installation. What we're proposing is to divide the program more officially into two phases. Phase one, which is non-physical improvements, I'll talk about first. We would, we're recommending that we require a written request from either the HOA or the concerned neighborhood residents. These are, non-physical improvements include the speed watch, neighborhood speed watch, where they check out a radar gun from the police department and record offenders of this, that are speeding, and then the city works with them to mail, mail letters to those residents. There's also traffic trailer, where you may have seen out in the neighborhoods, it sits on the side of the road, and it's the radar sign. Signage, sometimes, some of the neighborhoods just don't have actual signage, alerting drivers that they've entered a residential area and that the speed limit has changed, and so we make sure the signage is appropriate, and pavement markings, as well as enforcement. When we gather the, the data associated with the original request, typically, we can see spikes or, or patterns where the, the speeding occurs, and then we work with the police depart, department to provide enforcement during those timeframes. Phase two, we are recommending is, in order to have physical improvements actually installed in the road, that the neighborhood would then go into a phase two part of the program. We are recommending that it requires written requests to move the neighborhood from phase one to phase two. And what I've done is taken the steps from the original program here, and crossed off the ones that we're proposing to eliminate, to try to make the program a bit more efficient and easier for the neighborhoods to get to the end result. One of the, so, I've already stepped through most of the steps, but the priority ranking, we're proposing that that is included in step one, not its own individual, and only be utilized if there is a, an issue of conflicting needs or insufficient resources. The petition to study, we're recommending that we eliminate that and go straight into plan development. Plan development includes meeting with the neighborhood with some of our proposed ideas and solutions for this, for the traffic problems, and so, there, we would be able to engage and discuss the, and the issues with the neighborhood. We are recommending that we eliminate the test installation portion of the program, because there, when this program was first developed, traffic calming devices were not prevalent in the area, and they are now, and so, we do have quite a bit of data, both from our own installations, thank you, Melanie, as well as neighboring jurisdictions. The, the ability to, to send residents to look at existing traffic circles, or raised crosswalks, or chicanes, in neighbor, in some of their neighbors' streets, or in some of the neighboring jurisdictions, those are available, and we can send them to look at them, and we don't feel that the test installation is necessary. There, some of them are unsightly, and they are costly to do that step, as well as, again, trying to make this more efficient process. The project evaluation, that step was to specifically evaluate the test installation, so for recommending remove the test installation portion, would also include removing that step as well. We recommend we keep the ballot step, but instead of having the 60% of respondents have 61, 60% of the property, or the residents in the, the defined area, as was in the original program for the test installation.
Instead of 51%?
51% was for the petition to study. 60% was for the test installation, and then, it was 60% of respondents for the, this ballot. So, instead of three petition or voting spots, there would just be the one, and it would require the 60% of the, the residents in the affected boundary.
Returning the ballot, or just 60%?
60%. And one, one of the things we wrote in here is, if opportunities arise, we would, we would try to utilize the, the horsepower of the, the homeowners association, or the, the interested residents to help us to, to collect those signatures or, or ballots. Again, the reporting, we, we took it out, we're recommending removing it as a separate step, but include it in step four. Really, at the end, we do need to report back to the residents what the results of the ballot were, as well as what our design and construction plans are. In here as well, we, we indicate that construction is contingent upon council approval, so it would be an opportunity at that time to report back to council what the, the plans were for that neighborhood. Again, we've, we've kept the landscaping, we did some modification to the language of the landscaping, just to give a little bit more flexibility on versus whether there's a homeowners association or individual residents who want to take ownership of the maintenance of the landscaping. And then in step six, we also combined the step of monitoring and maintenance with follow-up evaluation, but not changing the intent of those steps from the original program. Current projects, we have 24 neighborhood streets who have officially requested to be a part of the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, actually, we have 26, but 24, we're considering would be classified under the Phase 1 portion of our program, based on what I've stepped through this evening. The 24 neighborhood streets have had various treatments, from striping to signage to law enforcement, and a number of them are content with the improvements. They feel that the, the situation has been mitigated, and they aren't proposing to move forward. We'll continue to monitor those and work with those neighborhoods, and if they come back to the city and request to move to phase two, we'd like to propose that, that we, the, the modified program would give them the framework in order to do that. We do have two streets right now, Northeast 19th Drive and Northeast 14th Drive, who have requested to move forward into a more aggressive physical traffic calming devices, such as traffic circles and chicanes and, and curb extensions. We have had some extensive neighborhood meetings, both with the individual concerned residents, as well as homeowners association, as well as a, a more extensive neighborhood meeting with both of those neighborhoods. They were well attended, and a lot of great feedback, and we've proposed a, a recommended solution for those roads, and pending the, the outcome of the council's decision on the ordinance for the, the revision of the program, we'll decide how we, we move forward with those neighborhoods. Tonight is the first reading of the ordinance, and no action is required. The second reading is scheduled for the June 1st council meeting, but I'd like to entertain any questions anyone has about the program or the proposed changes.
Michelle, and then John.
I think that looks, a six-step program sounds much more efficient than a 12-step program, so that, that's great. I see you've got quite a backlog of 24 neighborhoods that are interested in the program, and we have only funded this, can you refresh our memories on what we have for budget for this? And then, you know, if that is projected to meet the needs of what's in the queue?
We have $150,000 in the approved budget annually for this program, and right now, like I said, the, the 24 streets, although they're in the program at, at some stage, a number of them are content with the striping, and they don't want physical improvements, so we continue to keep them on the list, because they've gone through phase one, and if they, if they do experience additional issues or concerns with traffic in their neighborhood, they already have gone through phase one, but they aren't engaging or requesting to move to a more aggressive step at this time. The two that are very engaged are the two that I listed, Northeast 19th and Northeast 14th, and we do have sufficient budget this year to construct the, the improvements that we've, that we think are appropriate for those neighborhoods.
John, and then John.
My first question was the budget that we had for it, and then also how much we spent, so it sounds like we're within budget. My concern was, is if we take out the priority and don't have a petition to study, if we get an overwhelming number of people wanting any one project at, at one time, how do we end up prioritizing? And I don't know if there's a way we can involve the Planning Commission or some other entity that doesn't necessarily hit the staff right away.
Good question, John. I think the, the process is established that when this was developed here, and then also all the other cities, that the councils wanted to look for objective criteria. That includes the speed, 85 percentile speeds, traffic volumes, accident information, all those things, and school routes, pedestrian facilities, and Stephen Chan is our traffic engineer, takes into all those factors into consideration to, excuse me, to make sure that this is an objective process rather than subjective process.
Laura, you said that the ranking system is still a part of the program, if necessary.
It is, and, and we've worded it such that if, if there are more projects than what the resources can handle, we would fall back against the actual point system to rank those projects.
Well, I, I just want to bring up a, a point in the initial briefing, when I became a council member, and it was brought to my attention that we opened a new school in Sammamish and didn't put any traffic management or calming features on a roadway, and now we're doing it after the fact, so, you know, we've got hundreds of kids congregating in a location like Rachel Carson, but we're focusing on individual streets where there could be a concern. I just wonder if we maybe are missing the boat on prioritization. I, I would like to make sure that all our schools are safe first, before we start unprioritizing the city projects.
And that's a great point, and I think that one of the things that the council has in the budget is that the non-motorized transportation sidewalk program, we asked all school districts to give us their list, that was about five years ago, and we revisit with them, we ask them what the priority is, and we'll try to implement those things with our own resources, and, and also getting some grant monies, that those school routes are eligible some of to grant monies.
I think John might be talking also about the street, not just the sidewalk, but make sure the streets are.
Right.
Traffic calming.
Maybe we can spend some time with John to get all the background information, if anybody else wants to join her, too.
Also, one of the, there is a sidewalk project planned for Rachel Carson for 244.
Yeah, I, I just hate to see that after the fact. I mean, we had an opportunity with a brand-new school to have those features in place before the school opened. Thank goodness we haven't had an accident.
But look at Southeast 20th, with the other school there.
Nancy, we have some others first.
Sorry.
So, Laura, quick question for you, two of them. What's the timeline from the time that first call comes in? Don and I went down to Pine Lake Elementary probably about three months ago with Nate. We sat with the teachers that were down there. What's the normal best-case scenario, if somebody calls up, says we have a problem, all the way to the end, that, that the traffic is somewhat calmed, or hopefully, that's the outcome? What's it take on the average?
Well, I'd like to start with, this particular program is really designed for the residential neighborhood streets, not for the arterial streets, and so those would be handled differently. The, the residential streets, the timeline is approximately, six to eight months is where they would need to be in the, the Phase 1 to see if there was an effect based on the improvements or the enforcement we were doing. And then after that point, it would be another, a year, assuming that we can engage the neighborhood, and they would vote in favor of it, I would see a year to the end of construction.
So, altogether, from the time the first call to the end, it's about one year?
It could be, it could be 18 months, I think would be an aggressive, an aggressive schedule. Again, it really involves the interaction with the neighborhood, so assuming that they are willing to meet, and they meet all of our timelines, 18 months from the first phone call to the, we walk away with improvements in the ground.
And then, last question is this, that, what's the cost for the, say, the full-meal deal? I know that if you put up. I know that if you put up one of those flashy things that says you're going above 35 or 45 miles an hour, those with little solar things are about $7,500. What's the cost for something if you were to go in there and, you know, tighten up the curbs or add speed bumps and all that? What can the cost be for something?
A...
Ballpark me.
Well, individual device, it depends on the number of devices. A traffic circle, for example, can cost around $10,000. A raised crosswalk, approximately $5,000. You start adding up the incremental. I think right now, the improvements that we have proposed for, or we're proposing for 14th and 19th, the combined total is under $100,000 for the two streets. But as we refine that, we will be bringing those back to the city council for consideration to go out to construction. But it's about $100,000 for those two streets, and they each include curb extensions, one traffic circle, and landscaping.
Okay, one last question, sorry, I lied. From the time the person calls, who's in touch with them? Is there sort of an ambassador that represents the city for these people so that they feel as if their call hasn't just gone into the black hole and they're not kind of kept up on speed as to what's happening next?
There is. Our traffic engineer, Stephen Chen, stays in contact with the neighborhoods. And we actually keep a map showing where each of the projects and calls have come in, and we ask them to submit their request in writing, and we keep those and keep a folder on each of the individual streets.
Oh, good, okay.
Tom, did you have a question?
Yeah, Laura, when you take the surveys, or take the ballot, rather, do you just take it for the people who live on the streets in question, or is it a larger group that's affected by the whole traffic circulation question? For instance, if somebody in a, at the beginning of a cul-de-sac area that's characterized by cul-de-sacs, a good example would be up here in Windsor Green is an example, where you have several areas that feed into one access point. Do you just deal with the people who are along that access point, or do you deal with a whole feeder pattern?
Typically, we focus on the adjacent property owners, but we look at each case individually. For example, on 14th, there's a number of cul-de-sacs who actually feed into that street, and that is their only way in or out, and so they are being included in the petition, the ballot area. Whereas on 19th, there's a number of streets that connect to 19th, but they have other options to go to 14th, or some of the houses to the north have options to go to the north. And so we've included about three or four houses, depending on the street and the geometry of the road, three or four houses up on those streets that are connected. And again, we've included the cul-de-sacs that are connected to the street.
Nancy, did you have a question?
No, this program is designed for residential streets as opposed to arterials or connector streets, is that not correct?
Yes.
And what you might do there might be inappropriate on a major arterial?
Yes.
Okay, and we, John mentioned the school programs, and we have a whole process for doing very extensive improvements for school-related issues, don't we?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on Tom's question. I am affected from 19th Street improvements, and I was not asked petition. I asked for special privileges. They said, hell no, you're not included in that one, so basically, I did not get the petition.
You're allowed to accuse yourself, Ben.
But what I wanted to also do is that, for the benefit of the new council members particularly, because there's been so much history about this non-motorized transportation, we actually had a consultant that worked with the staff almost a year and a half, two years, with the park commission and the planning commission to develop a non-motorized transportation plan. We included the components of those plans in our budget process as we go through it, and we also checked with the school districts to make sure that before the budget process, if they're up to current. Maybe we need to bring those up to speed, and it's good to refresh it for me also, it's been a while since we got those plans up there, so we'll schedule a study session to go through.
Laura, you pointed out that the traffic trailer is one of the options in phase one. We have a portable radar trailer, one or, we have one or two of those.
One.
One that moves around, and that trailer doesn't have a recording head on it, does it? So that you can actually, like we brought up with the solar radar units, I was hoping we'd get a recording head so we could tell when the speeders come through there.
No, it does not. And we, but we do gather with the traditional tube data, we do get that information so that the police can target their enforcement on the hours where they see the patterns of speeding.
Now, I thought we were going to get a recording head for, that we could move around to the, two of them?
We have two of them.
Or does that mean peace, John?
We have two of them now.
We have two? Oh, wonderful.
Well, we're not going to tell you where they are.
Well, we should, we should tell our citizens in the next newsletter that we will be recording the speed so that they can show us when they really want to go through there fast.
Do we want to let them know we're taking the pictures also as they're passing through the area?
Do you have any fake cameras you can attach to them?
I'm sure we can.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for Laura? No? Well, this is, thank you very much. This is the first reading, so it'll be coming to us, when was that?
June 1st.
June 1st for second reading and adoption.
Do we ask for public comments?
Well, is there anybody that would like to comment on this program right now? No? And by the way, in the consent agenda, the resolution appointing the members to Samamish Youth Board is Resolution 2010-415. So that is the, that's the end of business. Next comes council reports. Michelle?
Yes, I have a couple of things to report. I have been following closely the closure of a trail out in Falls City. Those of you that know the Falls City Park and the trail that's gone up the hill to the Snoqualmie Valley Trail, which has been in use for years and years and years, and was closed down by a new homeowner last year and blockaded. And so I've been involved in, with many other user groups representing equestrians to get the county to work that trail issue, and they voted on Monday at their council meeting to impose eminent domain and get the trail unblot. So I just wanted to report that that is going to go forward. They, so hopefully the trail will be open later this summer, so they're trying to get that resolved.
Yes, Kathy Lambert was working hard on that.
Yes, yeah. And she did a great outreach in getting all the different user groups involved and writing letters and that sort of thing, so the council would go forward with that. The other thing, two other things, the second thing, tomorrow evening, the Suburban Cities Association is hosting a networking dinner down at the Embassy Suites. I don't know if the new council members have had a chance to go, but tomorrow evening is Mike McGinn, Mayor of Seattle, will be the speaker. It's always a great opportunity to network with other council members and kind of get to speed. I won't be there because it's my daughter's 21st birthday, and we're taking her out, but...
We are guaranteeing Mike McGinn safe passage out of the meeting.
Yeah, I hope so. Yeah. And then the third thing is Thursday is the PSRC Puget Sound Regional Council's Executive General Assembly, and I will be attending that in the afternoon. I will not stay for the dinner. Is anyone staying for the dinner and the award ceremony? Okay, good, great, thank you.
Good. Tom?
Well, I'd like to report that I successfully survived an excursion with the mayor down to Evans Creek Park this last weekend.
Down to which park?
I'm sorry, Ebray Creek Park.
No.
Evans Creek.
Evans Creek Preserve.
Evans Creek Preserve, sorry. Too many Es. Anyway, we started at the top and went down to the bottom. I only lost my balance twice, and one minor twist to the ankle, but that was about it.
You need repelling ropes to get down the hill.
You really do.
Oh, no.
That's a challenge to go down there, but if you do take the challenge, I'd like to report that it is a beautiful, beautiful area down there, and I think it'll be a very nice addition to the city once we do a little more work on it. The second thing is, the mayor and I had a very interesting meeting with Eastside Fire and Rescue last week. We got some, shall we say, very interesting dialogue directed our way about the Aldera Montagne annexation and the effect on the Falls City Fire Station. At one point, it got to the point where I thought it went beyond the bounds of propriety. And unfortunately for the mayor, most of it was directed at him.
Mr. Madoff.
I was likened to Bernie Madoff.
Well, the terms flim-flam man and Bernie Madoff were used, just to give you an idea of the flavor. I went to the Eastside Fire and Rescue Finance Ops Committee meeting tonight, and I'm happy to say that the tone of the meeting was considerably different. The whole subject did not come up at all, fortunately.
Thank you, John.
Just a quick thank you and shout out to the hundreds of volunteers that showed up on Saturday to drop off their bikes, take the bikes apart, and then load them into a big hot trailer as they're being shipped out to Africa. Mary Trask and the rest of the crew that do amazing work, I think Mary was a Sami winner? Yeah, and she does a great job. And the mayor dropped off a bike, had an enormous front wheel and a teeny tiny back wheel. Never seen anything like that before, and it was great to have that. I dropped off my kids.
That's all they had when I was a kid.
The antique section.
Our kids dropped off their bikes, and it really was terrific. We went around the Kalahani neighborhood, they had a huge garage sale, and I went around and picked up other people's bikes, so it was, worked out well. And it's just wonderful to see people out there, and it's nice that City Hall was able to let people use that parking lot, and they did a great job of organizing everybody through, so.
You know how many bikes they got?
They don't know, I didn't know they'd get their total yet, but they were well up into the 400s when I was there, all sorts of colors. Many pink bikes are going to Africa.
Now, I have a question. They take them all apart for shipping them off?
Yeah, we take the pedals, take the pedals off, and they take the handlebars, and they loosen those up, and they loosen the seats as well. And then they have groups, they go over there, and then they put them back together. Yeah.
Okay.
It'd be tough to find the parts for your bike.
I said he was on the one-wheel one, you know.
Okay. Nancy?
Yes, Bernie. I think I heard the comments were addressed not to just the mayor, but to all of us, we're all Bernies.
Yeah, it was a pretty, actually, we had made a motion to make Fire District 27 more or less whole for the 125,000 that they were losing this year by our annexation, and the rest of the board didn't agree with the motion. And so in the process of it, we had a few heated words from the chair of the board, but I let them go off my back. Nancy, your report, please.
Let's see, we met with the planning commission, the mayor and I met with the leadership of the chair and vice chair of the planning commission, and Cameron was there. And this was yesterday, and they discussed the planning commission agenda, which seems to be on target and moving forward. One of the items that we didn't discuss that may come back to need to be addressed is the level of service because of the Lake Samamish Parkway and the budget and capital project plans. So that may come, I think, later after our August break, come forward as a topic that we may need to look at. Because if, you can't just take it off, if, depending on the traffic counts, if the concurrency issues come forward, that the Parkway's in failure, to keep development open, you need to change your levels of service so you stay in concurrency. So that may be coming forward as a big topic for the planning commission potentially in the future.
I just talked with staff today, then I have a meeting tomorrow too. I'd like to get some new counts before we jump to anything else on that project, and let's complete the phase, let's get some fresh counts, let's take a look at it. Don't want to jump the gun right now to say, let's change the level of services and this and that at this point, because with the 202 improvements are completed, with the improvements that we put in place, I suspect that we have a pretty darn good number.
You mean phase 1A and phase B?
Right. And then also 244th will be completed too, so let's just take a pause, let's get some numbers, and let's take a look at it at that time before we undertake a major work item.
Is that it, Nancy?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. John?
Yesterday, I had the opportunity with a gracious host, who's a fellow council member, Michelle Petiti, to go visit the YMCA in Newcastle. Has anybody else had the opportunity to visit that location?
Stopped and looked in the window.
Yeah, well, she gives an excellent tour, so I would take her up on the nickel. It only cost a nickel and a cup of coffee.
A free cup of coffee.
Yeah. And then two board members graciously had invited me to come and check out the new facility. So hope is not lost that the Y could build such a facility, maybe someday in conjunction with the city of Samamish. They still own property near Pine Lake Middle School, even though I think some of us may hope that that would be closer to city center. But it was a wonderful facility, and they did a great job, and it was well-used, and parking was precious. That means that there was a lot of people attending. This morning, I had a coffee, kind of a get-to-know-you coffee, with the chairman and the vice chair of the Parks Commission, and talked about different things that they would like to see for Samamish. I wouldn't call it a lobbying event, but just kind of a sharing ideas. And one thing that they mentioned is a couple council members are part of, and they didn't have the brochure with me, some kind of native plant designation for your backyard.
Wildlife backyard.
Yes, and they're looking for, the vast studio audience that we have here tonight looking at this either on TV or watching it online, they're looking for 40 more families' homes to participate.
Forty, four zero?
Yeah, they got 110, and they need 150. And so they're rounding them up a few at a time, and I'd said I'd look into a birdbath and a couple other things that I might have to do to qualify, but I just wanted to throw that out there if they hadn't approached you on that. And then, last but not least, and I won't steal any of the mayor's thunder, I had to keep my day job today and not attend the USGA Senior Open Media Day, but I'm sure JB and his counterpart Jake, the Samamish Review and Samamish Reporter, were there to kick off an event that's almost just two months away for the US Open. So hopefully it was a good time for all, and I wish I could have been there. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
By the way, I got my certificate for the backyard in the mail today.
Oh, did you? Good timing.
And it designates wildlife quarters.
Oh, sure.
Every time I put up my bird feeders, the bear visits me. So...
That's wildlife.
That's wildlife.
Thank you. I have two items I wanted to share tonight. The first is an invasive plant here in Samamish that I wanted to bring some attention to. A couple years back, Michelle Petiti had actually brought Tansy Ragwort and showed that so that people could become aware of this. This is a knotweed. It's actually from, off of East Lake Samamish Parkway. It's at 196 Northeast and East Lake Samamish Parkway, next to the big house that's partially constructed up there.
Oh.
And this is right along the Parkway. You can see it's only May 18th, and it's not fully grown yet. And there was another foot that I couldn't quite get because it wouldn't fit in the car. It's an invasive species. It was brought into the country originally as an ornamental plant. It is aggressive in competing with native plant species, particularly along rivers and streams. So along the Cedar River and the Green River, the Raging River, King County has a noxious weed program going on to try to identify the locations, and then to actually inject the stems with a herbicide, and then to come back later the next season and spot-spray anything that has survived that. It's bad for salmon and bad for our streams for a couple reasons. It, I'll pass this brochure down. It tends... It, I'll pass this brochure down, it tends to just force everything else out. It'll even out-compete cottonwood trees, which is surprising because they're so prolific. It, insects don't like it. So what happens is, as it replaces native species along streams, and I understand we had, in the past, had this in Pine Lake and Beaver Lake Parks, although apparently, our Park Department, Kyle Endelman, has been valiantly knocking this stuff down and has it to the point where it's out of Beaver Lake Park and it's under control at Pine. We do have this in other places, two locations along the Parkway, at least, that I've identified. And it is something that we do want to get rid of. As it supplants the native species, insects and other kinds of larvae do not like this plant. So what happens is, is all the kind of insects and things that normally drop off, slough off of plants into a stream and become the protein food for young trout and young salmon suddenly stop. And so it starves the stream for food. And then in the wintertime, it dies back, exposing spawning salmon to predators. And it also, the root system dies and will not hold the riverbanks. So it actually replaces plants that are better at holding and reducing erosion. So for about five or six reasons, as we get serious about salmon in the basin, we will want to need to identify the locations and then patiently work with them, the same way our staff has patiently worked on reducing and hopefully eliminating this weed in our city parks.
Would that be a volunteer project that could be to eradicate that?
Actually, there is a very special process that the staff goes through this thing. So this is, you have to be certified to handle some of that stuff.
Right. But the volunteer part could be.
Locating them.
Locating it.
Oh, locating it.
And then with a GPS unit taking the note of where it is, so that people later can come back and, who have special training to work on it. The herbicide that they use is Roundup, which is commonly sold, and people can get it to work in their homes and things. You don't want to touch it, you don't want to get it in your eyes, but it's not something where you wear masks and all that kind of stuff when you're injecting the plants. But volunteers can certainly help identify the locations, and that's very helpful in helping to eradicate it. The second thing I have is also serious, and it's something that I had, we had talked about, I guess, for a couple of years. That's streetlights. And we had historically, and I'll pass these out, too, there's two different ones here. We've had a streetlight standard that goes back 10 years, and it really is sort of the 1890s streetlight that we first put in along the 228. What I'm proposing tonight, because we are in session and I can make a motion, is that I want to move that we change the streetlight standard of the City of Sammish officially from the, what I'll call, the 1890s wrought iron standard to a more modern pole with a full cutoff lens. The second sheet has a particular product brand name, and I'm not recommending the brand necessarily, but you can see in the sheet here with the blue name Fortis across the top, that on the left, they call it the flat, the flat lens Cobra Head. And we've talked about that, having a full cutoff on the glass so that the light can only go down. It isn't in a big bubble that shines everywhere. So it's also dark sky friendly, and it's possible that staff might have some amendments they want to bring to us. But I didn't want to go through another construction season, having contractors specifying what I think is an inappropriate old-time style to go in front of modern, current houses. I'd like to see us have this. Normally, you see these in a kind of aluminum color, it's a galvanized steel, and they come with a different arm length so that they can be right on top of the street, shining straight down and not into neighboring properties. So I move that the City of Sammish adopt revised standard for streetlights that would use the, a flat lens Cobra Head on a single davit pole. And in the case where we want to have double davits, we'd use a steel double davit pole. And I am open to Mr. Cunningham coming forward with amendments or changes that he might want to detail this change, but I'd like to have this as a policy change tonight.
Point of question, can you make the motion that we have staff research it and put it on as an agenda item at the next meeting, so we don't have to make a decision after just receiving the information?
We can do that, if that will be something that we can do relatively shortly. I didn't want to wait a month or two to have people out buying something, thinking that the 1890s is really the, what they need to order. I would also note that these are in the range of $5,000 apiece, whereas the more antique ones are more in the $7,000 range. So it's actually going to save money, both for the city and for developers. But if you'd like to have it.
We could schedule it for the next meeting.
I'd accept a friendly amendment to have it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Nancy, seconds. Any further discussion?
I have it.
Nancy?
You know, when we went to that sustainability conference from the National League of Cities a year ago, they commented that the LED lights were the wave of the future and save a tremendous amount of energy and money. And I wondered if, I didn't see LED lights on here. So I mean, I guess that's something that I would like staff input. I agree, I want to change in the standard.
Yes.
I think that's very important, but.
I know there's been an installation of about 10 lights in Bellevue that are the LED. In any event, whatever light you had, you would certainly want to shine it down onto the street and not into the neighboring properties. And so, whatever kind of technology was inside of the Cobra Head, I think that we would still end up with this general style. But I'd be glad to see if I can't find some details on those new LED lights. Although, if I understand correctly, the technology is not there for us to want to immediately jump to that.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank also Councilmember Cross that he brought this information in advance of this meeting to us, and so John and I had a chance to look at it. I think that we'd be ready for the next council meeting to come talk to you about this thing. We also had done some extensive research on the LED lighting. And there was, grant money was available through the Department of Energy. That's one of the projects that we were hoping to accomplish, that to change our streetlights from the regular light bulbs to the LED light bulbs. It was cost prohibitive. I mean, yeah, it was, so we'll bring some of that information to you. And then Mark is right, the technology isn't there yet to be commonly used for these purposes. John, do you have anything else to add to?
Yeah, just a couple things. There's really two decisions for the council to make. The pole is one, any light fixture can go on the pole. So there's the light fixture, or the pole that you want. This particular pole that Councilmember Cross is recommending, if you drive down Southeast 8th, you'll see a number of metal poles that look just like this. That's the pole. If you look at 228th, south of Southeast 24th, you'll see the metal poles that look like these. That's the pole, essentially, that Councilmember Cross is talking about.
We already have it in the city.
We have it in the city. It was, basically, what King County standard, a DOT standard. About the only change that ends up getting made in these is the radius right at the top. Some of them have a larger radius, and some of them have a tighter radius, is all. So that's one decision. The other decision, then, is the, is the light itself. So the Cobra Head is what's recommended. The Cobra Head is what you'll see on these poles, on Southeast 8th and on 228th at the south end of the city. That's a Cobra Head. They all have the flat cutoff lens. All of the new lights that we put in on the, on power poles, where they're just attached to the pole, if you see just a flat bottom on that, that's the full cutoff lens, and that's just about all that goes in. I would let the council know that in the last roughly year, those lights that have been installed that meet our current standard, in other words, have the antique pole that's on 228th, also have a fixture now that is a full cutoff fixture. So it looks very similar to the 228, the fixtures on 228th, but it's a full cutoff lens. Even the post-top ones that we have along 228th that are not dark sky, full cutoff fixtures on top of the post, even those are now being made as full cutoff, post-top fixtures, so.
But we'll give the complete report next time we come to you on this one, so we'll bring it to you.
And we are using this pole because we're extending the Southeast 8th poles around onto 224th, and there already are these, these poles that Councilmember Cross is talking about.
244th?
On 244th. They go around Southeast 8th and onto 244th. We are using these poles on 244th as an extension of the ones that are there now. The difference with that is, the ones on 244th will be painted black. So you can use this very same pole, you could paint it green, you could leave it as metal, you can paint it black, whatever, you know, so the, whatever your pleasure is. John, and then Nancy.
Yeah. Living in the poor north end of the city, where we begged for lighted streets for years, and then were thrown a bone by getting some stuck on the telephone poles, you know, any kind of lighting would be an improvement, but aesthetics is always in the eye of the beholder, and I would be cautious to say that we would want a city standard that everybody would have to use a specific lighting system. I think of the town center and some of the beautiful, you know, pictures that we saw, and it had kind of an old Paris-type feel with the cafes and so forth, an institutional-type pole, and our new town center may not fit the decor and the ambiance of awnings and water features and pedestrian walkways and people strolling with strollers and kids playing in the park that maybe we're trying to do as opposed to downtown Bellevue. So I would like some flexibility on, you know, if the design standard specifies it in a certain location, it might make sense. The galvanized poles, I'm against because of the same reason why we don't want galvanized piping on the new cell phone towers. It just stands out like a sore thumb. But black or green, which tends to blend in, certainly has some merits. And unfortunately, we made a huge investment in the 1890s look, and if we're replacing poles in certain areas with contemporary poles for lighting in the midst of old-school poles, we might not get the consistency that we're looking for. So, you know, on a street like 228th, we might want to think twice about maybe carrying that theme along that one street, and maybe diverting on the side streets to a different look, so we can light more of our city streets at a lower cost, as Mark pointed out. So there's just some things that I'd like to discuss further. Thank you for bringing it as an agenda item, but maybe a little more research would be helpful for everybody.
John, as I understand you saying that we have the antique poles, but you can have full cutoff heads on them. Right. A couple locate, well, actually, I think right across the street here, the ones that were put up by Skyline High School as part of their expansion, I believe those have a full cutoff fixture on them. The ones that are down on East Lake Sammish Parkway have a full cutoff fixture. We changed out the ones on East Lake Sammish Parkway at Lewis Thompson Hill Road at that signal. The original ones were like the ones on 228th, and then in the past year, we went in and changed out the fixture to be a full cutoff fixture there, too. So there are examples of those around. Nancy?
Two things, a question for John and a question for Mark. You were going to do a 10% per year on the existing fixtures on 228th to convert them over, like in front of the park?
We were? I don't remember that.
Oh, yeah.
We had talked about it, Nancy, but there was never an adopted policy.
I don't remember that was any direction.
It was discussed that we might want to try to move over to the cutoff, full cutoff glass.
You know, I guess I'd like to make a friendly amendment to your motion to ask that we look at that when we come up next week.
We're going to bring it up next week at the.
My second question is.
Next council meeting, which is the first one in June.
My next question for you, Mark, was just basically, in light of what John is saying, that these full cutoffs are available on the other poles, is the look of the pole a big issue for you, or is it the full cutoff?
It's getting, moving away from the 1890s look, really. If you look at this one on the right-hand side one, this is a wood pole, actually, then with aluminum mast arm on it. It's possible, these also come kind of in aggregate concrete. So for residential developments that want to have something that's softer in wood, or maybe an aggregate concrete that has a nice look, they can do that, but still having the full cutoff head and being in a cleaner, more contemporary look, rather than trying to replicate an earlier era, which may be appropriate if we had a house or several houses that were historic and we wanted to put light fixtures around them.
Yeah.
They'd be very appropriate. I think the most contrast I've seen is the new grade school that Lake Washington built next to Inglewood Junior High. It's a very nice school. The architecture is very clean, very modern, and then it has the 1890s light standards out in front of it. So that really was when it clicked in my head that we needed to do something. And I like John's idea that when we do town center, we look, and maybe we can find a palette or a range of fixtures that are current, will match what town center is about, and are going to be appropriate there. And then we could then also make those available for developers who want to do those in neighborhoods. I just didn't want to see more mixture of the 1890s. I wanted to at least get us up to the 50s. And then when the LED lights really do become efficient and cheap and the thing to do, then we can make the next 60-year jump.
One of the problems with the LED lights right now is they're, unlike the typical lights that we have that have been around for years and years, the LED lights don't have a standard design methodology for spacing them and their intensity and all those kinds of things. So you end up kind of doing things by trial and error, which is what's happening in Bellevue, and PSC has two or three installations. Seattle City Light has a number of installations that they're testing various design parameters on to see what really works best. Ben?
I'm just looking at the calendar here, Mr. Mayor, and also paying attention to the discussion. I'm wondering that Councilmember Cross, that you want to maybe talk about this in the study session first, and then bring it to the council with an action item, because I'm hearing some choices that the council wants to include in this standard. What would you like to do?
My immediate interest is in moving away from the 1890s style as our default single standard. And so to me, if we can make that decision, then I'm comfortable spending more time in going into more detail on the range of options, including kind of the styles that we consider and allow people to use.
Would council be ready if we bring a resolution in that effect on the June 1st meeting, or would you rather have some discussion in the study session on the June 8th, which is not that far down?
Tom, you had a comment.
I'm looking at the cost-benefit issue here. We've already established these things are two grand cheaper than the current standard. Is that correct, roughly? My recollection of the light poles on Southeast 8th is they're fairly tall. Does this mean we can also get by with less lights?
Well, the number of lights has to do with the distribution of the light, and I think there's a certain formula that the engineers use, that the lumens, is that what you call? That has to be in the local streets, .6,000, or then the 2.2 in the arterial streets. So there's a standard in design they go through to identify how tall, how much of a space that you need to have in terms of the lighting. The taller you go, less frequent poles you need.
Well, I understand that, Ben, but it's a matter of whether you put 100-watt lightbulb bin or 150-watt lightbulb bin. But if we can save 25% or 30% of the fixture of the poles, that's what we're talking about, too.
In general, what you're saying is true. For any given street and the width of the street and that type of thing, generally, the higher your poles are, the less poles you'll have to have. So, I mean, from a general standpoint. And you're right, whether you have 100-watt light, or 150, or 250, or 400-watt light in the fixture, plays into. that whole, that whole discussion.
I do have one request for general consideration, uh, let's stay away from sodium lights, please. Stay away from sodium lights.
Oh, yeah. Um, I, I wanted to, to comment on that. If you go to two forty-eighth, the new construction that's, um, south of the, the, the new bridge that's under construction on the existing piece of two forty-fourth, it does have these new aluminum light poles and they are taller and they are farther apart. And that's probably appropriate on a big arterial like that, but it probably would look out of scale in a residential neighborhood where you'd want them to be more in scale with the housing. So I think you could go tall and high and farther apart, save some money in the arterials in the residential area. I don't think you'd really want, uh, the really tall poles, uh, way up in the air throwing light like that.
I'll give you that, Mark. I was more concerned about the number of fixtures we have on, say, two twenty-eighth.
I just.
Well, we have, uh, when we did two twenty-eighth, of course, we had a big discussion at council about, uh, you want a evening, you want people out there walking in the evening, so you wanted, uh, get away from the county rural standards, which is what, uh, they were using the Cobra lights, uh, probably a quarter mile apart or whatever. Um, and actually, the rural roads here before we incorporated didn't have any lighting.
We did not have any lighting. Immediately after incorporation, we installed, I remember about close to nine hundred lights. We, we instructed Puget Sun Energy to put them at the critical locations and intersections.
On the power posts.
On the power poles.
The arms, the Cobra arms.
And then we added more as we build the road projects. This discussion is very fresh in my mind, nine years ago, we were having a similar discussion on the road projects. So, uh, your, your pleasure, I just wanna make sure that we do this thing right and that the council is comfortable with what we're doing here.
Nancy?
I really think we need to have a, a good discussion at a study session, there are so many things that play into it. Compatibility, I mean, I, I agree with the comment, we, we just need to be careful that we do it right. Um, and I think you're right in the new developments and new streets that are being lighted and stuff, but if you've got unfortunately a, a two twenty-eighth fixture with the bright, bright, bright lights that we haven't changed apparently, uh, you don't want to put, start putting the poles in our mixing. So I think, I think we need to just make sure that staff has an opportunity to have an input and I would like to see it come back as soon as possible.
Bulbs are changed, but not the fixtures, so I just wanted to make sure.
We did change the wattage, didn't we?
Yeah, we did change.
Yeah, we've done a number of things on two twenty-eighth. I, I'll, for the new council members, you probably don't, don't know this, but, and some of the council members probably remember, but unfortunately with two twenty-eighth, there was a design flaw. When they did their, when they did their calculation, they used the wrong, uh, uniformity and they used the wrong intensity in their, uh, in their calculation. And so we got way more lights than we needed and at one point, when we did this phase down here, we took out every other small light down here and used them, used them on the, uh, on the north of, uh, of south, of southeast eighth. Uh, and so that way then we had half as many of at least the small lights. We then reduced the wattage in all of the, all the fixtures to try to, you know, get the glare down and the intensity down, but it still is very, very bright and probably still is overlit from a design standpoint, even today.
Let me take a look at it, if you can bring this thing back in the council study session on the, um, eighth. We have a joint meeting with Redmond Council, we can go into our study session after the joint meeting.
Is that meeting here, Ben?
Yes.
We're hosting, Michelle.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Mark, is that okay with you?
That's fine.
That's the closest study session that we have, that's the next available.
I thought John had some good comments here and, uh, we can get some more details in.
Mm-hmm, good. Okay. Is there, is there any specific information you'd like staff to kind of prepare for or?
Yeah.
I took some notes here, John, as the discussion was taking place, I heard the discussion that we want to have some flexibility in different parts of the town, the town center part of it. I heard also that the strong desire to change the standard of the poles from what it is to perhaps something else. And I also heard that you want to perhaps consider continuing with the existing theme on a street that if you invested so much on that one, so.
Okay.
I, I took some notes here and I'll, I'll share that with you and then we'll bring it to the council on this one. I heard also sodium pressure, don't use that at all.
Nancy?
You missed mine, which is how much is it going, what is it going to take and what will, what would it cost to switch out, start switching out the existing full throttle lights that blind everybody?
And replacing them with the, the full cutoff.
Yes, just, just the.
Not the poles, but just the fixture.
Correct.
Okay, we can get that information.
We can bring that too.
We talked about doing that already. I thought we said we would. We did talk about.
Talk about it, I don't think we adopted anything.
I think we did though, we said ten percent a year. Full cutoff? I'm having a deja vu. Yeah, and it was ten percent per year we were gonna do.
I don't remember, so.
I don't remember, but I mean.
Yeah, I remember the discussion, but I don't remember the council ever actually taking an official action.
That we did do the ten percent.
Yeah, yeah. It's a good idea, I support it, but I, I don't know that we finally got it.
Yeah, well, I, we, we weren't against.
Nancy, we can go there if that's what you guys want to do.
Okay. Okay, good. Um, John, did you want to add to your report?
The Curly's are getting chickens.
Chickens?
Are you getting roosters?
No, no, a lot have roosters at City Samamish, Deputy Mayor Whitten.
Okay, thank you for that addition to your report.
Rooster for years? One chicken, two chickens?
Okay, it's the, it's the mayor's report now. And, uh, John, as John mentioned, I went to the Sahale this morning for media day and I don't remember seeing the Samamish review. Oh, Chris was there, oh, okay. Um, it was quite an event, they, they had three representatives from USGA there and, and of course the local people that have, have been here, Mike and Chris. Um, and then they had a, a teleconference with, uh, Fred Funk, who was last year's senior open winner back east someplace, I don't remember where. And, uh, the USGA fellow that, uh, is in charge of the technical issue of the, of the course, I learned more about golf today than I ever knew. Um, they talked about the, how many inches of the rough for the first five feet and then it'll be a different, uh, length for the next six feet, uh, fascinating. And it was also interesting to hear Fred Funk talk about, uh, his feeling about Sahale and others on the, on the tour about Sahale. Uh, there is no other course like it, apparently, maybe in the world with those huge Douglas firs. And, uh, fascinating, I was sitting next to one of the, uh, originators of the Sahale course, Mr. Wright, who's, um, up there in years, but, uh, he gave me a very interesting history about he and several other members of Inglewood, I believe, and Broadmoor got together and decided to buy four hundred some acres out in the wilderness, uh, back in, in the sixties, I think.
Yeah.
So, uh, it was a very enjoyable day, uh, it was raining when I left there, I had no intention of golfing. But I did have an epiphany, uh, early in the day. I was thinking about golf as it relates to other courses, other sports, and maybe you can help me, but thinking of basketball, tennis, baseball, football, especially soccer.
Yes.
The only, the only sport I can think of where every time you hit the ball or interact with the ball, you score a point, is golf. Now, of course, in golf, it's, it's not a good thing to score points. But it makes a very interesting spectator sport because there is scoring on every point.
You can do in tennis.
No, not every time you hit the ball.
Contact with it, it counts.
Oh, every time you, oh, contact.
So that's why I think the, the golf is so interesting on TV, because actually a, a point is scored every time you see the ball hit.
I get a really high score, I do pretty good on golf.
Missing is also, by missing the ball entirely.
If you whiff, it still counts.
Yes. So anyway, that was my golfing experience for today.
And Don, they're mostly cedars, not firs, by the way.
Oh, is that right?
Cedar trees.
Okay. I stand corrected on that one.
Have you been on the Eldera course?
No.
I would think it would be very.
The la, the first time I played golf was, I was in high school and I played all day because the local course said, uh, a fixed price for all day, so we got there in the morning and we played till it got dark. Uh, the last time I played golf was in Kennewick, uh, and I teed off at high noon in front of the country club, uh, restaurant and I proceeded to hit a condo. So, uh, that was the last time I played golf. Um, the other thing, Nancy and I met with a couple of the commissioners from the Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District and, and Mr. Ron Little and, and the, um, city manager, and we're reintroducing these regular discussions with the commissioners, which we did some years ago. And I thought they were very beneficial in the past and, and we had a good meeting.
Quarterly.
Were they quarterly in the past too? Uh, and, uh, a lot was accomplished and, uh, I did put an agenda item on there which, which we discussed briefly and said we would follow up with the council and I wanted to follow up with that. When we had our meeting with Issaquah Council, the issue came up as to, about, uh, annexing or merging with the Water and Sewer District. And I think our council basically said, well, we don't want to put it on our plate at this point. Is that the understanding that we had?
Uh-huh.
Um, well, I brought the topic up for discussion with the commissioners to discuss the pros and cons of it, not saying that we're moving forward with the process. Um, and, uh, Bob Brady was receptive to talking about pros and cons, so I wanted to ask the council if, if we have any, uh, opinion as to whether we should talk about the pros and cons, not moving forward with any specific action, but getting the pros and cons on the table.
Talk about it.
Nancy?
I just don't think the timing's right and I, I guess my reaction would be, um, I would rather see us work on things where we can co, do better coordination, uh, look for economies of scale and things like that, um, than begin, begin a process that, uh, isn't really, the timing of it is, is so up in the air. Um, it's very controversial, it is a good idea to discuss something like that when it isn't, there isn't a lot of hot issues that we're fighting over.
Which is now.
Which is now, exactly. On the other hand, so that's the pro for it. Um, I think personally, um, uh, the timing of it, um, maybe identify, I, I, you know, I'm reluctant to spend time or money on it right now because I, I think Kohani's an absolutely key issue. I think, uh, whether we're successful in an annexation, it depend, I mean, I think Kohani Water Service should go with whoever gets Kohani. Uh, if, if Issaquah gets Kohani, then, um, it, would you want to annex a water district serving it? I mean, I, you know, I, I kind of see, uh, staff has full plates and I'm not sure, Ben, I don't know, Ben, how you feel about pursuing that right now and what the workload would be, but, um, I, at our level discussing it, I, I just don't, I, I think it's too controversial to, um, I, I, I don't see any reason to go into it. I think we've, we've addressed that twice and.
Other comments from council members? Michelle?
I, I support Nancy, I, I don't think we should be having that discussion because we decided we're not moving forward with that and I don't wanna, I don't want to spend time talking about it because, uh, when it does happen, all that's gonna have to be explored and re-explored and things may change again because of Kohani and so then you're just starting over. So I think it sends a message that we are thinking about doing it and we've already said we're not thinking about doing it, so it, so I don't support.
Other comments? Mark?
Well.
Having that discussion.
I understand that, um, you know, really during my time on the council, uh, we have had a lot of fish that we've wanted to fry before turning our attention to the Water and Sewer District. I don't think the idea was that it never would make sense. I can think of a couple of reasons why it might. Um, they have equipment, uh, to do, um, um, utility infrastructure, uh, repair and installation. We have equipment, uh, our backhoe doesn't work on their job, their job under normal circumstances doesn't work on ours, they, they make it available during a snowstorm. Um, we have currently an unstable financial, uh, model for the city in my view with, uh, the one percent increase in, um, property tax that's allowed by law. And part of the solution, I believe, in the future is going to be, uh, having the water district, um, merged with the city and then having, uh, some, uh, level of a utility tax like, uh, virtually every other city of our size in the state. And, uh, so for those reasons, along with the efficiencies that come there, remember also that you, you went, uh, to the Water and Sewer District and asked about how much it was gonna cost to hook up to Beaver Lake, uh, and, uh, they, they said like a half a million or was it?
No, it's one point.
Point two million.
One point two million, one point three million.
Uh, and, and that's, uh, you know, you can have a formula that says, well, it's the, how, how long, how much street frontage you have versus how deep your lot is and that kind of thing. But really for public agencies, they should be able to look at the Beaver Lake Lodge, look at the, the amount of use that it gets and translate that into equivalent residential units or ERUs. Um, is it the equivalent of two houses worth of sewage flow or maybe it's six? And then charge us that much and not have it be one point two million, that's ridiculous. If, if the water district was merged with us, we wouldn't have that discussion because we would be the water district. The other thing is, is that if we were to, um, as we have park properties and we have other buildings, other houses here on our own property, we've had that sort of question and stress come up again on our counseling building over here, uh, it just seems like, um, the time is gonna come sooner rather than later. And I think there are efficiencies in government that just can't be ignored. So, uh, I'm personally in favor of us putting the pros and, and whatever cons there are, including the big difficulty of actually accomplishing this, uh, onto the table.
Thank you. John?
I would just say, with all due respect to Michelle and Nancy, I understand what you're saying about this being a lot of work and also seeing it being controversial, but as Mark Cross said during the election, that this was going to be a time of some heavy lifting, I think this is part of a heavy lifting. As you move in towards maybe looking to move forward on the town center, we are gonna need to be able to work hand in hand with the water department and I think if it serves the taxpayer in a more efficient manner, if it saves the taxpayer money, if the service is good, and if we can also generate some revenue from it, I think it makes perfect sense. And I think it will be a lot of work, a lot of work, and I think this particular council's up to it. I look forward to a challenge.
We'll be.
At least to discuss it.
Tom and then John.
When we first talked about this, I think it was at the offsite, uh, retreat, rather. And at that time, uh, the three of us were brand new on the council and had not really, uh, gotten a feel for things at that point. Not that we're tremendously much more experienced, but we do have a little bit more at this point. And I have to agree that life might be simpler as a city if we had everything under one roof. My initial reservation, uh, about taking this on dealt with workload, um, it still is that. On the other hand, uh, at the time we were talking about it, we were thinking it might not be a friendly situation, uh, might be kind of in the corporate world, a version of a hostile takeover and, uh, if we're not dealing with that, I think it's probably worth at least having the discussion. Doesn't mean we pu, we push it through, we see it through. Uh, I think we ought to broaden the scope to include the other water district too, if they would be willing to entertain us, we could, uh, uh, those are the people I pay my bill to and, uh, uh, John does as well. So if we're going to take this on, I think, uh, we should look at the timing of it. We're coming up on a decision on town center, assuming everything goes right sometime around the first of July. Uh, as we get into the detailed planning of it, it would make an awful lot of sense to be able to control, uh, the whole thing. On the standpoint, from standpoint of synergies, I agree with Mark that, uh, we have the opportunity for consolidation here in some of the support areas, the motor pool, perhaps, uh, administration. Um, there are probably a lot of opportunities for cross utilization of, uh, facilities, of equipment and people that we need to take a close look at. So I would come down on the side of cautiously, uh, being willing to look at this whole subject.
Okay. John?
Uh, I think Tom may have answered my question as to whether this pro-con in
I think Tom may have answered my question as to whether this pro-con included the northeast Sumamish Sewer and Water District. And was that your thinking?
I don't know if it does or not, John. I say we should probably...
I guess it's still a question. Was that your thinking, to include both?
Well, I think an awful lot of that part of that water district is not in Sumamish. A lot of it's revened. But, so, it would be kind of like the school district situation from that point of view, but...
I suggest that if that's what the council wants to go, let's start with the one that has the largest service area in the city and have a frankly discussion and dialogue, but nothing, nothing in the sense that the hostile takeover, but to put the pros and cons at the table.
Nancy? John, are you through with your comments?
So, it wasn't clear, Tom, are you proposing that we talk to both?
I think we should take a look at doing both. We should certainly start with the southern version. I have no idea what the position of the northern branch would be in this effort.
Mr. City Manager, did you say that a lower percentage of the northern is in our city and perhaps too low to even consider?
At this point, I say that the largest is the one that what we have here is the Sumamish Plateau Water Sewer District. The northern water sewer district is a very small percentage of the area that is being served by the city, so...
Well, I understand that, but what percentage of the northeast sewer and water district is in our city?
I don't know that the, I don't know that number top of my head, Mr. Mayor.
It was built to serve the Sahali Golf Country Club, so it's the majority. I'm almost positive of that.
Okay, and then my turn, and then Nancy. I did get a follow-up email from Commissioner Brady that said, love to sit down and have coffee and talk about it. I emailed him back and said I didn't want to do that until we had our discussion at council. So, he seems receptive to at least discussing the issue without moving towards, as we said, without any hostility in it.
When does Ron Little retire?
Retiring this year. And they have actually interviewing replacements for him now. Okay, Nancy?
Are we talking about assuming the entire water district of the Sumamish Water and Sewer and Plateau, Plateau Sewer and Water? Or are we talking about annexing just that portion which is within the city limits of Sumamish?
I don't think that the council is ready to jump to that conclusion. What I'm hearing from Council Nancy is that let's take a look at, to put the pros and cons on the table. That's obviously one of the decisions if the council wants to move forward with it. At this juncture, what I'm sensing is that from the majority of the council, that it's time to look at it, it makes sense to look at it, and let's bring the information forward.
The other thing, as we go forward and on a sensitive, potentially very controversial issue, are looking at the implications of what we're doing for both the city and the water district. I mean, one thing that was mentioned point blank was that there are differences in salary levels and compensation. I don't know which way they go, but certainly employee status, compensation packages.
I think there are a whole list of issues that have to be addressed and have dialogue with the district. That's all I was asking for, is opening up a dialogue with the district on the pros and cons and the implications of it.
Right. And there's been precedence on this issue in other cities and other jurisdictions. We can use their examples in terms of what type of questions and etc.
A little history for the newer members of the council. When we first incorporated, in the first year, we hired a consultant to actually do that, determine the pros and cons of possible annexation or merger with the district, and the district took offense to that. They thought we were doing a power grab rather than just a study. And so, we discussed it with the commissioners, and at that point, they said, look, you're just a brand new city. Why don't you wait a couple of years until you have your feet on the ground, and then let's have the discussion? Well, that was eight years ago. So, I think I can remind the commissioner that was on the commission at that time that you said a couple of years, it's time to have a discussion.
I guess what I would also ask for staff is to bring forward that study, just so it's a basis for understanding some of the areas that would be appropriate for discussion.
Think we can find it? Okay. Well, thank you very much. I had one other comment, and that was that we did have an East Side Transportation Partnership meeting last Friday, and it was a very interesting meeting. Deb Eddy, Larry Springer and Glenn Anderson were there and talking about the legislative session as it relates to transportation. And a couple of the interesting comments that they made. Glenn Anderson said basically, he said that the rest of the state hates King County and is agnostic about Puget Sound.
Did he say that?
Glenn Anderson. And basically, he said that what you have to do is bring the rest of the state in by showing them what they gain by mobility in Puget Sound, freight mobility. If they want to ship their hay to the Far East, I didn't know they shipped hay to the Far East.
Tons and tons of it.
Is that right? They have to get it to the port. So, it was a good point, and in fact, the others made that point, too, that, in fact, Deb Eddy made the point that the Transportation Committee in the House has 27 members and only one is a Seattle legislator, so she can get things through the committee, or things go through the committee, but when it goes to the full house, that's where you get the opposition. So, the suggestion was if we want transportation issues to be dealt with, we should be lobbying Seattle members between sessions. So, now, Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
No, Mr. Mayor, I don't have a report.
Okay, we have an executive session for property acquisition pursuant to RCW 4231101B, and we estimate, what, a half an hour?
Yes. No action required.
Be no action after that.